I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're truly thankful for this day, for the opportunity to God to serve and to live here. Pray your blessing upon our meeting this morning, upon our military, police, firefighters, especially those in California who are suffering true hardships at this time with bad fires. Please watch over our meeting and help us make wise decisions. In the cross of the Lord.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the October 27th, 2018 meeting. You should have received email copies. I entertain motion.
So moved.
Have a motion in second to approve the minutes from October 27th, 2018. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the auditor with the queen's.
Good morning. We have had two payrolls since the last meeting. The October 24th payroll total is $337,420.92. And the November 7th payroll totaled $338,141.39. And then we have the accounts payable claims document. The dollar total for that is $3,556,517.85. That's up due to a lot of liet and wheel tax and excise distributions.
Would you approve? Second. We have a motion in second to approve the claims as presented by the auditor. Any discussion or questions?
I need to abstain from line number 18689. There's two line numbers. Same line.
Okay. Any other commentary, Scotty? All in favor of the approval of the claims as presented with Mr. Vane abstaining from the ones he mentioned, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes three zero. Report from the department heads and elected officials. Anybody have anything?
Just want to give you an update where we are with several projects. As you know, we submitted for the NDOC tracks program and we should be hearing sometime after Thanksgiving or December if Montgomery County was selected for this project. And December 7th is a due date for intersection improvement for State Road 136 in New Core, working with several of the community representatives to get support letters for this. Also, we had used USI for some preliminary information that, so we'll try to get that all submitted here shortly. We have the, as of next year's budget, we had identified three culverts that we're going to be replacing, which we are going to do that. However, since the recent heavy rains, we have two other culverts on overcoat that we're going to be analyzing because it's a lot more erosion has happened during that rain event. So I'll be putting up together two bid packages so we can get numbers and then present it to you, present it to council and see how you want to move forward. Bridge 182, which was on our budget, we're going to be starting engineering on that. Bridge 79, we're going to have United Consulting start the engineering on that for this year or for next year. We'll build, bid it out the following year. Next three items, we're going to be working with American Structure Point. We've been trying to finalize the time material contract with them or we should have that resolved this week. That involves, you know, Light Creek, New Core Bridge, scuttle protection on about 10 or 15 bridges that we're going to have to address, and then looking at rehab on three bridges, deck replacements. Country Club Road, as you know, we've kind of put that project on hold. BLN is doing traffic counts on that and I should have that here in a couple of weeks. Obviously dealing with NDOC very closely on that project. Go back up on 136 in New Core. NDOC is supporting that project. It's an intersection that they have been looking at and kind of strongly suggested that we submit for federal funding for that project. Community crossings, we submitted that this year. They did not, majority of the funding was granted to towns and cities. Counties were kind of left out of that, but we can submit in January 7th for the next round. So some of the items that we had looked at for community crossing, we'll hopefully still get the money and still be able to build those next year. I did get the revised proposal for the berm and ditch cutting equipment. I'll present that to you down the road and then Lori has given me financial institutions to look at, putting the leasing together. Getting back to the sewer district, you know, Phil's involved with that. That project is proceeding very well. They've got quite a bit of the forest maze in. They will start on the east lift station here first week, or first of January and then the west lift station will probably be in February. They're still slated for probably July or August to complete that project. I've got about 15 chalk drawings I need to go through this week, so trying to keep that process going. We're working diligently on the sewage treatment plant expansion. We did a tour of the facility and basically at that point, we are looking at the existing systems and getting an assessment of those. And by December 19th, I will have a filed report on where the true rating of that treatment plant is and then we can make a decision how we're going to be moving forward with the sewer district. Redevelopment Commission, I'll be working with HWC probably next couple of weeks to review the construction plans for the extension of a 20-inch water main down 32 to the intersection of, oh, I said before, and State Road 32. So we're working on that. Next project is I'm working on a local road safety plan that the Federal Highway Administration is doing a pilot program with five counties in Indiana and we've been selected to participate in that. I've, we've gone through several webinars produced, provided a lot of traffic accident data for us and then I'll be going to a conference that Federal Highway Administration is going to put on and pay for in Savannah, Georgia, the first week in December. Before you, I'm going to have three contracts. First one regarding overcoat, earth exploration. They're a soil testing company. We're going to do some borings in there so that we get a real understanding of the soil types because if people driven out there, you can see that there's almost like a 20 to 30-foot drop off there. So we'll make sure whatever we design, it's going to be there for 50, 75 years. USI, I approve a, would like to approve a contract there. The only earth exploration is $9,142. USI consultants, we are looking at, we weren't funding this next year. However, in our CCD budget, we have a line item worth $200,000 for road and bridge improvements. Basically at 500 South and 100 West, as you go into New Market, it is very narrow few there and it's going to require relocating utilities, acquiring right of way, improving drainage. So what I'm going to do is get an engineering study to see what it's going to cost to do that, present it to you and you can present it to council and see when we want to move forward with that project. But there's a lot of concern that's been happening, especially with school buses and traffic down through there. That one is $28,300. The last one is on Bridge 79. What that project's going to include is basically straightening out that S turn through there, putting in a skewed bridge because we've identified that on the thoroughfare plan as a frontage road, which is, the frontage road is just going to be two lanes heading from the county road down to 231. So this is just another piece that we need to get taken care of. Part of the bridge inventory, that's been slated as a bridge that needs to be replaced. So if we're going to replace it, let's put it in the way we want it. That fee for that project is $282,775. That includes surveying, engineering, wetlands mitigation, right of way documentation that we'd have to do. We're going to have to get permits through Indiana Department of Rec resources, Indiana Department of Fire and Mail Management, and the Corps of Engineers. So it's a significant, a lot of work that needs to happen and we're hoping to be able to get that, we will get that completed the end of the year so that we can get that out of bids so we can again have good bids and see how we want to move forward in 2020 to get that under construction. If there's any other questions, I'll be answering for you.
Only thing I have is refresh one where 182 is. I know where 79 is, but I can't place 182 location.
182 is south of Ladoga. It's on County Road.
550.
Yeah.
It's on 7.
750 up through there. It's identified on a thoroughfare plan. It's north of 231.
234.
234, excuse me. It's a triple box, triple arch pipe, which what we're analyzing, that is well undersized for how much flow that's coming through. There's about three square miles going to it. So again, that was actually identified as one of the priorities, one of the first bridges that we need to get in, get that replaced.
I remember talking about it. I just couldn't remember the location.
Yeah, because we got a situation where we got the roadway starting to slide into it. And if you look at through the arch pipes, there's actually a one-foot depression where the pipe is starting to give way. So that's another reason why that one's a priority to get fixed. Okay. Thanks, Jim.
I've got a couple of comments. I've talked to Jim as well as Mark about making some of these projects more visible to the public. We'd like to get it on the website so that people can see this. But my question for you two guys is, I don't think we ever approved the plan that Jim rolled out to the council and to the commissioners.
Thoroughfare.
The thoroughfare plan. And I know it's a fluid thing depending on funding, but I think it'd be good for the public to see what he's put together and have that available on the website as well.
That'd be part of the comprehensive plan. We're trying to get that done enough to be in the plan, but it's, that's a pretty good process to actually approve a thoroughfare plan because there's public involvement in that process. And so the comp plan says, identifies the thoroughfare plan in the comprehensive plan, but as an exhibit. That is, it is.
At least put it on there for draft so we can know.
It is. There is a picture of it in the comp plan too.
As it stands, they not approved. You mean on the website?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, definitely. This is the thoroughfare that I put together with Mike Davis. And basically, at the next point of that is actually developing a thoroughfare ordinance, which prior to that ordinance, to be able to adopt that, you have to have several public meetings, public input for that, addressing those comments. So this is just something that, you know, I put together and make you guys approve it. It has a lot of public input before it can be official ordinance.
It's actually, it's actually just a form of comprehensive plan. So you have to use the same process. So what you would have to do, you could either approve it as part of your comprehensive plan if you get to that stage. And it requires one public hearing, at least one public hearing before you actually adopt it. So the thoroughfare plan is in the eyes of the law, just a type of comprehensive plan. So I agree, you can put it out there, do what you want and seek feedback, but the actual approval process works like that.
Yeah.
I just think people would look at it and offer feedback prior to spring it on in a public meeting or, you know, a public hearing. Nobody has a chance to even review it before.
Yeah, the critical reason why we're going through this process is actually identifying what we consider primary and secondary roads. Then I'll work with Indiana Department of Transportation to basically reclassify these roads as our main thoroughfare. What that allows us to do then is actually get federal funding to improve these roads. So it's one step again to try to get, you know, federal and state money to help pay for our infrastructure.
And yeah, the other reason I bring it up is we're fast approaching frostfall all the time. So I know a lot, a lot of our roads were out of date as far as driveability on, on particular roads. It could be upgraded. So semis and things could drive them. So that was another reason that I think the more we can put out to the public, the better.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other elected official, department head, have anything? All right, moving on to old business. I'll turn it over to Dan. Looks like you've got several things there. Oh, oh, sorry, I missed the A. County insurance, county employee health insurance renewal. Did you guys, did you guys receive copies of this email?
The past year, we're all back at the last meeting.
Yeah.
No, it took six years.
Right. This has to do with, you know, now with the, these are the definite final numbers.
Number seven. So these will be what the actual cost is, not just the total renewal policy.
Yes. There was a slight increase on the.
On what?
On the dental.
Okay.
Which is completely off during.
Right. Yeah.
My motion, we approve the document on the health insurance going down the county employees.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve the rates as presented for the health plan that says 2018, actually 2019, excuse me. 2019 has presented. Any discussion?
That's no increase to our employees.
Right. So my understanding is exactly the same, except that dental, that one didn't change.
Correct.
Got it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes three zero. One other thing that the insurance company has asked us to do is to consider the amount of money that is left over from last year's. As you know, by going to fully self-funded and everything, we had a approximately $247,000 left in the bucket at the end of the, at the end of the claims. So obviously there's two or three options there. One, that can be a, you want to explain this? You did better to me than.
Right.
Dan kind of explained it to me a little better there at a meeting, so.
One idea would be to have a premium holiday and that would be to say to employees that rather than us deducting, rather than us deducting from their pay, their premium, is that the county would pick up that, the employee share for that, for that month. And I think the concept is, or what most people do is, when they have an excess and they're self-funded the plan, which of course was the idea, you have savings. If you want to pass that along to your employees, then you could essentially do that in December of this year. You could do that in December of this year and then look at next year, but that way they, that savings is being passed on to the, to the employees. So that's one option that you have in front of you. Certainly, certainly it's not an insignificant amount, but it's a, one way to deal with that. Of course, you, any excess you have, you want to build that up a little bit, but these premium holidays are a common, a common technique to use some of that savings for the benefit of your employees.
The idea around putting, the idea around putting that into the employee's HSA, was there an issue there? I, that's more discretionary on the employee's part of what they pay for. Helps with the deductibles. Just, have you looked into that? Is that, is there issues around doing something like that?
I think, I don't see that done as often. Sometimes you do that, but the premium, premium holiday gives more benefit to those who are paying more. So if you have a family, you know, the HSA is a flat amount. So the idea I think is that the premium holiday has great benefits to those families who are paying more all year long, whereas the HSA, because it's flat amount is not, you know, there's a couple ways to look at that. That's your judgment, but I mean, that's usually what it is.
I was just going to say, also, you're limited on how much money you can put into your HSA plan. And some of the people that work at the county have it all planned out by paycheck to maximize their HSA contribution. So I wouldn't want to go messing with that, especially at this point in the year.
This seems to be, from, from the way they explained, that this seems to be the easiest way. And it does two things. One, it rewards the savings back to the employee, not just the county. I mean, obviously, doing this is approximately estimated around $50,000 in what it would cost compared to the 250 that's left in there. So we would still have 200,000 as far as our savings in the bucket to move forward. And as we've talked in the past, at least, I know that when we did the increase, I don't remember, John, if you were here or not, but when we did the increase on the deductible, and we picked that 2,000 up between the three and the five, we were all in agreement that, you know, hey, we saved, the county saved $400,000. We should be able to reward the employees a little bit for that savings. And that's how we increased that deductible to 5,000, yet picked that 2,000 up. And I think this is very similar. So the change in the insurance has been, has been a savings for us this year. So we reward the county, but we also reward our employees because as you see on that paper, wherever it went, the premiums are not just a little bit out of some of those paychecks every month when they, when they get it.
Are you looking for a motion to, to approve?
Yes. Yes, we would need to take an action on this today.
What is the, he said 50,000. Is that the number that we withhold from the employees?
Roughly.
Roughly. That's, that's.
Remember how many? How much came back to you?
247,000 and some, some changes there.
200,000 surplus that way to carry out in case we have some.
I was just thinking, more for you, two months, December and January.
At least 150,000. Was there a number you're shooting for to keep back?
We just needed to keep enough in case there's, we have more claims and they're higher than the threshold. We have to count. That's what we do.
Just in case, in case next year's not as good as this year and stuff, you know, just got that kind of reserve.
My motion, we give a one-month reprieve on the, on the health insurance for the employees funded out of the excess fund we have left over in our insurance line.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion, questions? Anything from the audience?
Her head, I think, is actually fantastic. We greatly, greatly appreciate him. So thank you.
I just want to know if it was a one-time or a recurring.
Can't be, it can't be.
Then is that, is that one month or two pays?
Yeah.
Not December, it was March.
It's two pays.
Two pays.
Some months, there's three.
Pardon me?
Some months, there's three.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, I want to know if it was like an annual recurring reprieve or just a one-time.
One time. Maybe the whole month, right, Jennifer?
I'm sorry.
That 50,000 would be being withheld the whole month?
I'm sending a message because I think it's per pay.
You think it is per pay?
Exactly. Because some of those premiums are pretty high.
Well, that's true because, no, that's true because it's, it's approximately 90-some-thousand for the long premium.
Well, between lines, you pay, I don't know.
I think it is.
I just looked at it, but I look at so many numbers, they just kind of go.
Martin, I withdraw my motion and you give it to your people and come back with the exact number.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sending a message to find that out.
Okay, go with me. Terry, go ahead.
Being with council, I think it'd be great, I mean, not to disparage the employees or anything, but the object of being self-insured is to keep building that pot for future, the future of lowering the, the whole mess to the employees. It's, I mean, you know, you're talking 50,000 bucks, but 50,000 bucks every year adds up pretty good. Having been part of a self-funded insurance plan for over 35 years, it's great. Once it gets built up, it's great because you can cover anything then. I mean, maybe you have catastrophic insurance per employee now with your self-funded. I mean, that's the way you should work it. I mean, I know I'm not making myself endear by the employee saving this, but that's the way I look at it. The more you can build that up, the quicker, the more benefit you will get later on down the road, is what I'm seeing.
We're already able to keep the rate at the same this year as well, so that's a plus.
I mean, that, that was just my comment on it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else?
The other staff?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, go ahead. We'll hold that up until she gets that answer for sure, whether it's pay or month. We want B through H, which is second reading of all those ordinances. Dan, go ahead.
Ordinance 2018-31, means your internal control policies. And that change was brought about by a couple of things. First, the, it inserts the probation department's credit card policy, which had been omitted, so it gets it in there. Secondly, the internal controls committee met and made, suggested some other changes regarding how the credit card policy is basically conforming into our actual practice. It also, this ordinance actually inserts the internal control master policy into the county code, which it had not been before. We realized that some people had trouble finding it, so this would make it an appendix to the county code. And so this would clean up any issues we have for the year and put you in good position for next year.
Okay, with that being said, I entertain a motion on ordinance 2018-31.
Would you approve?
Second. We have a motion in second. Any questions or discussion for Dan? Any questions from the audience? Okay, none. All in favor of ordinance 2018-31, signify.
takes that statutory code fund and puts it where people can see it. Motor vehicle highway fund, or called NVH, has been around for a long time, but this past legislative session, the state legislature passed House Enrol 1290, which made some changes to the NVH fund. And as you can see in page two, the legislature placed a new restriction on NVH for, starting July 1st, 2018, that at least 50% of the money had to be spent on construction, reconstruction, and preservation of county highways. Now, that had previously read, construction, reconstruction, and maintenance. And maintenance and preservation are not defined as being one and the same, they're very different. Jeremy can explain it to you or Jim later, and we'll have an hour long seminar on that. The preservation is kind of the new push, apparently the state thinks it's very important. It mainly has to do with, as I understand it, making the roads less brittle by injecting or coating them with special magical. So, but this new restriction is actually written in then in B2. Otherwise, NVH fund uses are the same, they can be used for highway equipment, painting of bridges, acquisition of grounds for highway buildings, the purchase of fuel oil supplies necessary for the performance of construction, reconstruction, preservation, and maintenance. So it's a very versatile fund, but this, the important piece of the new law is this new restriction. So this would put the NVH fund into your codebook as a fund, and also include the new restriction.
Okay, for the explanation on 2018-32, amending the NVH fund. Any questions or discussions? Have you entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Have a motion in the second to approve. 2018-32, any other comments? Any comments from the audience? All in favor of 2018-32? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Okay. Ordinance 2018-33 is an ordinance that deals with the building code. Senate Rollback 392 passed this year and now requires certain disclosures to be made about advanced structural components. Advanced structural components, believe it or not, are lightweight, I-joiced and lightweight roof trusses that have a, that have less mass, cross-sectional area than some lumber. That's very common, actually, in.